All right, here we are, ladies and gentlemen. It is the Friday edition of Talk Back. John King over there, our show producer, and joining us in studio, and you thought he was just the chicken guy. He is not, ladies and gentlemen. Jason Herndon, welcome, sir.
Hey, thanks for having me, Peter.
Good to see you.
Good to see you again.
Now, you did not bring with you a big, a big box full of fried chicken. You bought something very exciting.
A box full of guns.
Yeah, I wondered how you got all those fresh chickens. Now I know.
Right, right.
The secret's out.
There you go, all right. So, 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 so you guys go ahead.
Yeah, well, okay, so, Jason, as you mentioned, we often get him every year for the double front chicken deal.
Mm-hmm.
This time, he's upped his game in many ways, maybe to the biggest game of all, other than the game of life. He's potentially going to the Olympics.
Whoa!
And he's working at getting to the Olympics in, 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 in a, in a type of shooting, which I didn't even know was an Olympic event because, I'll be, Jason, don't cry or get embarrassed, but it's really boring to watch. It is only 10 meters away from you, which, I don't, I know you don't shoot, Peter, but for most people that shoot.
10 meters is 30 feet.
It's not very far.
Right.
Right? And you're shooting a lot at this, at this distance, right? It's, you get one hour to shoot, is that right?
Hour and 15 for air pistol, yep.
And you're shooting, what, 100 shots?
60 shots.
Just 60 shots?
Yep, 60 shots.
So, it's same shot, same shot, same shot, same shot for an hour and 15 minutes. Now, when you compete this, the gun that you're using, you know, we're talking about guns, this might be the least badass gun that I've seen. You're shooting pellets, first of all, right?
Right.
Right, so you're not talking about a big load, you're not going to take down a boar. You might not even be able to kill a chicken with it.
Correct.
It's just for shooting paper, right?
It is. It's, it's a very accurate.
It's precision, it's precision shooting.
It is precision shooting, exactly.
And at that level, it's amazing. I was looking at this gun, I'm, the, the grip he has on this, what, what is it? You, you just, the stuff that you put on it?
Bondo.
Bondo. It's so you can see all the veins in his hand, so he can line up perfectly. And then on top of that, he's got, he's got something that looks like it would go with a scuba diver's gear. And actually, you do load it with a scuba air tank, right?
Yep, that's right. I charge the air cylinder that rests underneath the barrel off a scuba tank.
And there's an electrical switch on it. I mean, it's just, it's, for, for someone that grew up shooting, there was so much that I hadn't, first of all, I look at this gun, I'm like, that's amazing. It doesn't make any sense with anything, any type of shooting I've ever done, other than just target shooting, right? This really wouldn't exist unless there were Olympic tournaments.
Right, correct.
Now, when it comes to these tournaments, you are going, I believe, to Germany, right?
Correct.
Now, when is that?
I fly out the 24th of this month.
That's my birthday.
Oh, well, happy birthday, really.
Happy future birthday. Give it to him. 110, this is, I sent in his letter to the centenarian deal this, this week.
Did you?
Yeah.
I've got, I've got smart ass all over his forehead, right there. So, anyway, go ahead. Your times are coming, pal.
So, I hope, may I live to 110. So, uh, uh, so you're flying to Germany, but you don't, you didn't have a lot of warning that you were going to be going, right?
That's right. April 30th, I got the call from USA Shooting saying that we opened up a World Cup. We selected two matches you participated in. You're in the top five in the nation. You're selected for World Cup Germany, and can you fly out May 24th?
Now, we've already shown the Germans how to shoot in two world wars. Now, you're going to go show them at the World Cup, right?
Right.
Now, when it comes to, when it comes to this particular challenge, you're top five right now. If you can get to top two at the next trial.
Yep.
You'll go to the Olympics.
Correct. At US Olympic Team Trials, June of 2016, if I'm number one or two, I am headed to Rio de Janeiro.
Do you know how cool that would be?
I must, I must ask you, is this all on your own dime? I mean?
It has been so far, yes.
Right. Okay, so at what point will the US Olympic Committee kick in and say, we'll help you?
So, this is, uh, the beauty of getting towards the top of the heap and getting selected to go and shoot at a World Cup is I'm very close of being accepted onto the national team. So, a good performance in Munich, or a good performance next month at US Nationals at Fort Benning, Georgia. It's going to be my ticket to get on the national team, then things are paid for.
So, I must, I must ask you, what's the secret? Okay, when, when you're standing there, and you're shooting for an hour and a half, almost an hour and a half. I mean, first of all, your arm's got to get tired, right? Unless you have like this rock solid deal going on. So, are you allowed to rest? Are you allowed to go to the bathroom? What's the deal? I don't know how this goes.
That's, that's a good point, yeah. No.
Did you raise the other hand? I gotta go!
Be honest, do you bring a diaper?
Well, it depends, but...
Oh, he stepped right into that one, ladies and gentlemen.
It's, uh, it's what they call block time. So, when they say start, you have 15 minutes for sighting and prep time. You can shoot as many shots as you want in that 15-minute period. After that 15-minute period has expired, they say, this is the start of your match, 60 record shots, hour 15 minutes, start. And that's it. Now, you can shoot as fast or as slow as you want, as long as you get all 60 shots in within that hour and 15. So, sometimes, if I have a good rhythm going and things are going well, I'll, I'll stay up and keep shooting. Sometimes, I may have a little trouble, a mental block, and I need to sit down. I can take my hand out of the gun, put the safety flag in the chamber, and sit down in my chair, relax, drink a little water, close my eyes, kind of get realigned, refocused, and step back up. But the clock keeps ticking.
Now, for those of us that it might be nerdy enough to care about this, if you've ever seen a pistol shooter, Peter, oftentimes, you're, you're shooting at cans or whatever, even tactical shooting, they'll, they'll stand facing the target, you know, dead center, and have two hands on the grip.
The Weaver stance, right.
But, uh, Herndon shoots sideways. And the reason why, and he drops his arm like this, because he wants to use the big muscle, because he's shooting so much during that period, right?
Right.
That muscle's not going to tire as much during that time as the little muscles if he's holding it in front of it.
Interesting.
Um, so, I, I just thought that was really fascinating.
So, there's strategery going on there.
Right.
Now, before...
Exactly.
Well, it depends. Uh, the question I have, or the thing I wanted to bring up before we run out of this segment, you are trying to get some money because it was so quick before you found out you were going to German, Germany, that, for this World Cup challenge. And you're asking the public to kind of help you out on your endeavor, right?
Right. Uh, I have a GoFundMe backslash Jason Herndon site set up to help with the funding, since it was such short notice. And with all the matches that I've been to the last two years primarily, I have spent pretty much everything. And my wife says I cannot put the kids for sale up on Craigslist.
How much are you asking?
Well, hold on, we might have a deal here. Um, so...
I'm looking for some grandkids.
In the, in the last two years, Fort Benning, Georgia, three times, the Olympic Training Center down in Colorado Springs, three times, Phoenix, Arizona, and other small matches, preliminary tryout matches, that have been all on my own dime. And I know I'm getting close. And when they hit me with this, I had to say yes. And it's been a scramble, so...
How much do you need to raise?
Well, between Munich, Germany, and Nationals of next month, and by then, either I'm on the national team, or I'm, I'm looking for a different sport. I'm looking for about $4,500 total. And I've had some very generous people already donate, and anything helps. I love moral support, too.
Would you like some chicken?
I, I would love some chicken right now. Would you guys like some chicken?
And we gotta run. Listen, all the best to you, and congratulations, a new side of, of Jason Herndon. This is really cool.
Well, thank you, Peter.
It's, it's, it's obviously a passion for you, because you, you can tell you love it when you talk about it.
Yeah.
If you make it to the Olympics, I promise to watch this entire competition. If it's published, if it has, if it's videoed.
Yeah.
I could, I could just see, who's, who's, who's the little guy from NBC that dyes his hair all the time? Uh, I can't remember his name, anyway.
MSNBC, Chris Matthews?
Uh, no, 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 that, from NBC Sports, who goes to all the Olympics.
Yeah, you know how much sports I watch.
Anyway. And there's Jason Herndon, he's still standing there. Still standing there.
He's shooting, he's shot again.
He's still standing there.
Again. Yeah, it's funny, when they zoom in on one shooter, it's like, is something wrong with the TV? It paused. Yeah. And nothing happens. And then finally, you'll hear a pffft, and they put their arm down.
All right. We gotta run. Thanks, Jason.
Guys, thanks for having me.
Best of luck. We're gonna take a break. Adam Hertz waiting on the phone, 721-1290 or 1-800-568-5309. We'll be right back. It would be Jason Herndon. He's bad to the bone. Yeah! All right, 721-1290. Bob Costas, thank you, Kitty, for, for sparking our memory there.
Yeah, one of the other cool things that we didn't get into, of the five that are going to this World Cup trial, three of them are from either Idaho or Montana, real close by.
Wow.
So, maybe in the future, they can hold these stupid tournaments here, instead of flying them to Georgia and...
Right, exactly.
Elsewhere in the country, so...
What, what, I've been dying to ask him, if he's standing next to all, I wonder if there's any mind or games that they play on each other?
I think they go one at a time.
Okay, well, anyway. Yeah, like, break a leg, or something like that. All right, but we've got Adam Hertz on the phone. And Adam, John did a fascinating story today regarding the, uh, the city council races that are coming up. And I think a lot of people might be really surprised because the city council has been, if you will, staffed, manned, and womaned, if you will, by some stalwarts over the many, many years. And it looks like that's going to be changing. So, first of all, welcome to the show. It's, you're, you're a friend of Talk Back, and we appreciate you being on with us. What's going on in the city council right now?
Well, thanks for having me. And, um, I don't, I can't really speak for anybody else about what's going on, but it appears as though there's going to be a pretty large turnover this year on city council. Um, so far, no incumbents have filed for reelection, so that means that there's a potential for six seats to be wide open this year.
Man, now, I know you can't say what they want to say, or what they think, but what is your best guess? Because I think, you know, this is a talk show, opinions are okay, and you probably have the best opinion of all, since you know these people and talk with them. Um, and obviously, you gave me your own kind of position earlier, which you can feel free to restate as well, but why do you think so many leaving at the same time is kind of surprising?
You know, I, I think more than anything, kind of just life and, and timing. I mean, we have people on the city council, like Jason Weiner, who's been there for two terms. Ed Childers, I think, is finishing up his fourth term. And prior to that, he was the, the city treasurer. Um, so there's just people that have been around for a while, and they're looking to retire. In other cases, I think people are getting busier with, with work.
Max Bockus laughs at your city council two terms.
Not liking the job.
I, I, as I was gonna say, Max Bockus would laugh at just two terms at city council.
He's a senator for 42 years.
I'd be like, yeah, I get it. It just seems to me, there's, there's gotta be something about the job, or maybe there's a, you know, move up politically or something.
Well, allow me to jump in here for just a second and say this. Uh, and, and Adam, in all deference to you and the good folks on the city council, because you guys work hard, you go to a lot of meetings, but I'm sorry, the pay sucks. I mean, you know what I mean? I, I, I'm sorry. It just, for all the work that, even though people think, oh, they just gotta go to a meeting once a week, you know, on Monday night, so, well, they go, well, that's nonsense.
Well, if you watch those meetings, not even, everyone goes to all the meetings.
I know. But, but, but still, but still, you got, could you just describe a week in the life of a city council member?
Well, I guess first I'd take issue. I would say that the, the pay doesn't suck. I think, I think our city council members are overcompensated, and certainly on a statewide basis, they're compensated better than any other city council.
Well, you, well, you would know better, and so, go ahead.
And, and I think, you know, a large part of it is, is that it's public service and, you know, serving your civic duty. So, I, I don't think the pay should be relevant, although it's an important piece to the puzzle, because there's a lot of people that couldn't serve on city council if there wasn't some pay involved, because you're giving up, you're giving up time elsewhere. But, um, you know, the, the average week can really vary. It can be really minimal at times. It can be just a few hours, go on to committee meetings and the Monday night general meeting. And then, you know, we can get into budget season and, you know, it's kind of depending on how involved you are in that, and, and what committees you serve on, uh, you know, you could be at 15, 20 hours a week.
Now, let me ask you this. Are you, are you assigned to committees, or do you volunteer to be on committees?
You can volunteer to be on committees. You can be on as many or as, or as few as you want to. And when I first started, I wanted to learn as much as I could, and I was on every single committee. And, uh, I'm no longer on, on every committee, because I've found that there are certain committees that are not particularly contentious, and maybe my skill set's not real strong on those committees. And so, I just let other people do that work.
Interesting. Well, we gotta go to a break. When we get back, it seems to me, if I were you, which I'm not, and that everyone's thankful for that, but I, I would probably struggle every day with the feeling that what I was able to do on city council was limited and almost fruitless. That I would have a, a feeling that I couldn't achieve much from that position. I don't know, maybe you feel the same way, maybe you don't. Maybe, we'll talk about it after the break.
Stay with us. And when do you want to give away some coffee there, young fellow?
Boy, you know, that sounds really good, because I'm chowing down on this donut. I might even have to get some, uh, coffee during the break. Yeah, we have free coffee and toast to give away from the Rocket Coffee Coffee Stand there in the Garden City Garden Supply. The first caller at the number 721-1290.
Yeah.
Will get free coffee.
There goes.
Free toast, and your choice of spread.
All right, go for it. We'll be right back after this quick timeout, and Adam Hertz will stay with us.
Thanks for calling KGB. This is John.
Hey, we're back on Talk Back, and it's Friday. 721-1290 is our number. John King over there, show producer. I'm Peter Christian, and Adam Hertz, City Councilor, Ward Four is with us.
So, I asked, I Facebook listeners, why do you think the incumbents appear to be leaving Missoula City Council? Doc Shuldheitz says, I shouldn't be doing the last name, sorry, Doc. Uh, Doc says, easy answer. They've done all the damage they possibly could. Mission accomplished.
Oh, wow.
And I, I, as I said before, I think my, if I were to be leaving city council, would probably be because I felt like I couldn't achieve that much from that position, just because of the way Missoula is structured, in such a way that there's a lot of power invested in the mayor. Um, a lot of that power is taken away, it seems to me, from a very wide city council with so many members and so little power. What do you think, Adam?
Well, in some, some senses, that's true. We do have a strong mayor system, and the, and the mayor has quite a bit more power than I, I think the mayor should have personally. But, um, you know, there's, there's plenty the city council can do. I've really been a, a minority, to say the least. I'm the only conservative on a 12-member body.
Well, forget it, Adam. You, you, listen, man, you've been the Lone Ranger ever since Dick Haynes retired.
Woo!
Really, you have.
You know, and I think there's, whether, whether, you know, John's probably right in the legislative sense, as, as the Lone Ranger. I, there's not a lot, not a lot that I can move forward in terms of an agenda, or making reforms, or making changes. But certainly, I've taken upon myself to, to be the voice that, that brings things to attention of the public, because, you know, I have a strong feeling that if I was not there, a lot of things would just kind of fly through without a lot of public notice or, or public involvement. And so, I think that's largely been what I've been able to contribute. But certainly, you know, if there was a more balanced, uh, political makeup on the council, uh, I think there is a lot that can be done.
Well, now's the chance, man. I mean, if, if, if all these incumbents are not running, uh, I, I think this would be a, a call, if, if there are folks out there who feel, you know, like you do, Adam, that there needs to be more fiscal conservatism, or perhaps a, a different voice, uh, on the city council. This, I think this is a great opportunity to, to get involved and make your voice heard. Now, is, is that right or not?
Absolutely. Now is the time. The candidate filing for this year's election, which takes place in the fall, uh, candidate filing opened on May 4th, and it runs through July 7th. And like I said, it appears as though there's going to be, uh, open seats in every ward, but there will certainly be elections in every ward, regardless of whether or not any, any incumbents file for reelection. So, I'd really encourage people to get on the county website, uh, and elections website. There's a ward map, and you find out what ward they, they live in. And certainly, people are welcome to call me, or, or contact me via email, or, or Facebook, or Twitter, or however they want to contact me. Ask me questions about what it's like to, to run for city council, what it's like to serve on city council, and I'm, I'm happy to help.
And I think, I think it's, it would be a real good encouragement to you, too. If you've ever thought you might want to get into politics, but maybe you love politics from, as a casual outside observer, um, this is a great opportunity to try your hand at it. First of all, it's a winnable race. You know the size of your ward. Only the people in your ward are going to be voting for you, right?
Right.
So, you can go door to door, meet the people. You can do the old-fashioned kind of politics you think that people still do. Maybe you're, if you're numb to the flyers and the commercials and stuff like that, it's not likely going to be one of those kinds of races. The other thing is, because there's no incumbents, you don't have a natural disadvantage for starting out in a race.
Everybody will be equally unknown.
Right. So, you know, there's a lot of power for people that want to try their hand at politics. And, and, you know, frankly, a lot of the people that don't get into politics are the people that should. And a lot of people that get into politics are the people that shouldn't. I mean, a lot of people out there have good business acumen and a sense for, uh, what could and shouldn't be done by government. And they never get into it because they find themselves disliking it so much.
Well, they're, another thing is, they're too busy making a living. Now, is, is that another reason, Adam, why more people don't file?
Yeah, I think so. But, you know, it, it's, it's just, in my opinion, part of your civic duty. And it's something that I stepped up, and I made a sacrifice for four years. And I've enjoyed it, and it's been well worth it. And I'm not ready to continue that at this time. But I'd encourage other people to do the same thing, because it's, it's really, really important. It's as local, and as on the ground, and as close to home as you can imagine. Um, so, it's just a really important office. It's important that we do have business-minded folks, and fiscally conservative folks, and people that will push back against the reckless agenda that's been pushed through Missoula City Council, through the mayor's office for years and years. And I think now's the time for, for people to step up and make that sacrifice. And, and, you know, I think it's just really important that, that, that we have people do that.
I'm just gonna ask a question out loud, and Adam, you don't have to answer it. But I, I would love to get input from the rest of the folks in our audience. How much of this, because to me, this is shocking, that all these people would be stepping down at once. How much of this has to do with Mountain Water, and what the mayor has done to bring the city into the condemnation lawsuit, and the millions of dollars that have been spent, and the fact that that question is still up in the air, uh, whether the city wins or not, and the tax increases and all? I'm just, I'm just curious, what do you think, our Talk Back audience, do you think this has been, again, we're all just speculating, just opinions, do you think this has been a trigger to, to, to say, you know what, I'm, I'm done? So, anyway, 721-1290 is our number. We'll be right back. Yeah! All right, 721-1290 is our number. That's John King over there. I'm Peter Christian. Adam Hertz joining us on the phone, and he's going to be stepping down, not running for reelection, uh, at, in Ward Four. Now, you and I were talking off air. I, I asked the question, um, I wonder how many, just asking out loud, thinking out loud, how many of these people who are not running for reelection are doing so because of what's happening with the city and the condemnation process and the lawsuit against Mountain Water? And so, I asked you that question, and you, you gave me a very interesting response.
Yeah, I mean, my view is that this year, if you were running as a pro condemnation candidate, you'd have a, an uphill battle, without a doubt. I mean, I think that the public's getting worn out, uh, over this lawsuit. Uh, you know, we're arguably, possibly not even really halfway into it, considering all of the appeals that could go on. You know, it's cost millions and millions of dollars that, that we don't have to spend. And so, I think anybody who's running as a pro condemnation candidate has a real uphill battle, for sure. But I think that there's a level of arrogance within city and city council members and the mayor's office, that they just don't understand that. They really think that the public is largely behind this condemnation effort. The public largely supports them. And so, I don't think that, that that hasn't in any way scared people out of the race.
Well, Adam, if you do polls, and then take out all the polling voice data that is opposed to you, then apparently, you get the results you need.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know...
A rousing endorsement.
If you don't vote, it's automatically a yes, right?
Right.
Wow.
So, uh, we gotta have to let you go here shortly. One of the things I did want to bring up, though, before we left, is the cost of running for this particular position is not that high. Uh, I think it's like 140 bucks to, 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 to throw your hat in the ring.
And 23 cents.
Thank you. 140 bucks and 23 cents. And that's based off of a percentage of what you might earn in the position.
Yeah.
But, I mean, seriously, uh, you could, you could get into this race for pretty cheap. There's one of the wards that doesn't even have, uh, someone running yet.
Yeah.
So, you'd be a shoe-in. Uh, so, I, I definitely recommend to, uh, anybody out there that...
You could have a debate against yourself.
Yeah, I don't even care if you, if you're, if you're totally opposed to me on everything, uh, in, in the way you think about politics. I think it's better if we have more competitors out there, so people have a, a list of items to choose at the buffet.
Yeah, and the nice thing is that whenever there's an election like this, we try to have as many of these candidates on Talk Back, so you can ask questions, and they can make their voices heard. So, anyway. Well, listen, Adam, we have taken up enough of your valuable time, sir. Thanks so much, and we look forward to being, to being a friend of Talk Back, even after you're off the city council, okay?
You bet. Thanks for having me.
Take care, sir. All right, that's Adam Hertz. All right. All right, 721-1290, 1-800-568-5309. I asked a question. I guess nobody wants to answer it.
What was your question?
Oh, I just, how many of you think that they're not running because of the Mountain Water deal?
Yeah, I, I know.
According to Adam, then I guess not.
I don't think that that would be that big of a hurdle. I, I don't know, there's something that really shook things up. Caitlin Koppel steps down.
Right.
And then it was like Domino's, you know? Um, but I, I, I think what I said earlier has a lot to do with it. I mean, even if you're, uh, I, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't talked directly with Caitlin about it, but some of the others, I mean, uh, you're not able to change things in the direction you might want to very easily from that position, you know, to start off with. But one of the things that I have to give huge accolades to Adam for, frankly, there were many big articles that hit the newspapers that would never have happened if something didn't happen during a city council meeting that was a question that Adam started.
Right.
You know, uh, everything from the mayor taking his own raise, taking away a raise after he said he wouldn't, which never actually got to the newspaper, because for some reason, they didn't want to run that story. Uh, or, or other things that have happened to city council. A lot of it wouldn't have happened without Adam's involvement.
So, anyway. But, uh, one, the, the, let's put it this way. If there are no conservative voices on the city council...
There's no balance.
Yeah, it, it, it's, that, that's, that's gotta be tough.
It's a little topic.
Anyway, 7, 7, 721-1290 is our number, 1-800-568-5309. We have open phones from now until 10 o'clock. We have all sorts of things we can talk about.
I really want to talk about this lawsuit at the city council, or sorry, the, uh, Sheriff's Department, yeah.
All right. Well, we'll, I, I have all sorts of, of information to share with you about that, having done quite a bit of research on it. And from both sides, by the way, uh, 721-1290 is our number. We'll be right back. Hey, we're back on Talk Back, 721-1290. All of a sudden, we've got callers. So, let's get right to the phones and jump right in here with Susan. Good morning, Susan. What's on your mind?
Well, the city council of Missoula has always been ultra-liberal, which actually reflects most of the voters in Missoula. You and I probably both know that it's very difficult to be a conservative in Missoula. Um, and with that said, I live in the county, so I would never, you know, be able to even talk to the city council, let alone run, and nor would I be interested. Um, I think some of the smartest and most helpful people that would have the ability to run and do a great job on the city council would probably never run for any politi- political office. And, you know, the people that we hear from on your show that call in are so intelligent and so logical, and those would probably be the exact opposite of the people who would run for any political office, because I'm personally convinced that no matter which party you happen to represent as a politician, when you get elected, it seems like a lot of politicians lose their brain. And, I mean, it's really like, holy cow, I voted for you, I campaigned for you, I donated to your campaign. And when you get elected, you do just the opposite of what you campaigned about.
Yeah, I, I don't know, Susan. I, I, you know, I, I wish that the most intelligent out, among us out there actually had the impulse to serve their country in such a way. I mean, honestly, if, if God gave you the brain and the acumen to handle this sort of thing, for the good of your city, your state, and your country, go ahead and try your hand at politics and, and do something about it.
It was, it was originally called public service for a reason, because, because, you know, the original citizen, citizen legislator was someone who put aside their busy, you know, whether it was a farm, or a ranch, or a business, or whatever they did, so to whether it was a farm or a ranch or a business or whatever they did, so to go to Washington or Helena or whatever, to, to serve their, for, for a term or whatever, for a short term, and then they would, they would hand that off to somebody else and go back to their, go back to their life. That, that was the essence of public service, but it's not that way anymore. I mean, without term limits, you have people like Max Bockus who's in the senate for forty-two years, for heaven's sake. Anyway.
Yeah, and.
Whether you think he did a good job or not, but forty-two years, that's, I'm sorry, that's insane.
Yeah.
But, anyway.
It's a long time.
So, you wanted, you were making a point.
Well, one of the things that we brought up kind of during the break, you had raised that question about how much do you think the city water lawsuit has to deal with this? And I kind of pooh-poohed it, but thinking a little bit more about it, there is one possible scenario where this could play a lot into it.
All right.
As you brought up, I mean, we thought we were going to hear about the results from the city water trial four weeks ago.
Right.
It's been a long time.
It has been quite a while.
All the paperwork.
Judge Townsend has had this, she's had all of the associated paperwork, and I've checked on this almost every day, since April twenty-third.
All of the, all of the, the paperwork was in quite a while ago.
Right.
So, she must really be trying her, she must really be working through the material to come to a conclusive answer. And my best guess is, I think a lot of people thought it would be an easy answer for her
Right.
and that she should have been going quick and it would have been in the city of Missoula's favor. I think the longer this court case takes, the less likely, likely it looks like it would be in the city of Missoula's favor. And when I say the city of Missoula, I mean, the, the people that sued for it. I actually think it would be not in the city of Missoula's favor to win this lawsuit.
But, whatever. Let's move along. Let's get Brian on the line. Hi, Brian.
Hey, how you guys doing?
What's up?
Well, you know, Peter, I, in response to your thing, I think it has a lot to do with the Mountain Water lawsuit. I've had some contact with people at work at Mountain Water and, you know, I'm getting their side of the story, but it's just been ridiculous. And personally, if I served on the city of Missoula council, I'd be embarrassed to tell anybody. And if I ever ran for political office outside of that, I would not use it as an accolade because the city of Missoula is so messed up, the sidewalk issues, the turnabout issues. It's just been one mistake after the next and all they've done is spend a lot of money. And that's why I no longer live in Missoula, I moved.
Well, that's.
And so I wouldn't have to deal with it.
Well, and again, I, I appreciate what you're saying.
I don't. I think you should go be Jeremiah, voice in the wilderness.
Yeah, what, what I was, what I was going to say is that you're just the kind of person that needs to run for city council and represent your viewpoint because obviously whoever your city councillor was, because you have two, if, if you're in a ward in Missoula, there's six wards and twelve city councillors. You know, one, one of those people hopefully would have represented your views. Obviously, they did not.
They did not. I, I moved to Missoula, or excuse me, Lolo.
Okay.
I'm not, you know, I still work in Missoula.
Yeah.
But I just got out of the, you know, and it's amazing at how much more conservative Lolo is ten miles away in comparison to Missoula. And I just, every time you turn around, I was dealing with some liberal person that I disagreed on their views with.
All right. Well, thanks for the call, sir. I appreciate it.
All right, well, I do appreciate you guys suggesting people get out there to run and maybe we can get some good people in there.
Sounds good. Thanks for the call. Suzie, you're on Talk Back. Hi.
Hello, Peter.
Hello, Suzie. What's up?
I'm here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, a couple of things. Of course, you know, I had a, a very infamous four years on the county commission. There's several things that I'd like to address. One is, one of my roles was working on the transportation relationship with Missoula County and also some of the city issues. And I got to tell you, I disagree with your, or I agree with your many callers who say this is such a violation of what this country's based on. And this government takeover of business in general is so harmful to our society and especially in the manner that they're doing it.
Hold on, Suzie. In, in what way? You say the takeover of business, in what way are you talking about?
Well, the, the right to own property, the right to have a, a, a business entity and the freedom to run it under the laws that guide you is a huge part of what America was founded on. People who immigrate here today still look at it as a, the place of opportunity and every time a government entity decides to swallow up a private industry, it's an assault on that very, very unfortunate property.
We're not really, I mean, that's exactly explicitly what's happening with the Mountain Water lawsuit, right?
Yeah.
It's government trying to take over a private, really run water system.
I'm sorry.
I was just giving an example of what you were saying.
Yeah, yeah. And, and so from that point of view, I agree. I think it's an embarrassment, but when you deal with the city of Missoula in particular, although somewhat with the county as well, it is, and no surprise with the university and everything, it's so liberal and you see so much waste. We, a good example is in just the transportation, the, the county hired a local entity to do a study on bike path usage in the county. And at the, and I actually believe this was part of the city, not even the county, it's been a couple of years since this happened. But at the end of the year, when they were to present their findings, they had no findings after spending a very large amount of the taxpayers' dollars because they had, the first question is, well, what was your baseline to start, you know, to come with these conclusions, which were very vague? Well, we didn't have a baseline. And so immediately, everyone on the council was able to say, well, how in the world is that a viable study if you didn't determine what the use was at the beginning of the study and then you, to measure if there was an increase or decrease over a year? And that money was just wasted. There was no oversight by the government in Missoula who paid out to have that study done and apparently no guidelines given to start it. And that kind of waste happens in a lot of counties and cities. And, you know, I see it happen in the city of Hamilton all the time, things that are absolutely against the principles of, of our free market society.
Well, we saw that, we saw that recently with the water trial. The city council allowed the mayor to use one particular law firm. He goes off, gets a different law firm that wasn't approved by city council, they go and pay for a poll to be done in the city of Missoula that asks questions in such a way, this came out in court, where it was clearly they were trying to influence the outcomes of the questions and then come back and say, look, they support you.
Listen, that is, you know, John, that's the science that's used for everything today by the neo-environmentalist, the, the progressive party is you have an outcome that you need to prove.
What did?
And you skew all of the information.
Called confirmation bias.
Yeah.
It's the same problem that Krakauer was faced by the, and he admitted to when he was faced by the quote heckler.
Hey, Suzie, we're up against a break, dear. Thanks for your call.
Tell people to run.
You got it.
That it's worth it, but get out after four years, there should be term limits on everything.
All right, thanks much. Appreciate it. We're going to take a one-minute break. We're almost out of time. We have eight minutes left. So, if you want to tackle the lawsuit, we can.
I kind of want to. We can, we can start in on it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do that. We have one minute timeout. We'll be right back. The thrill is gone. B.B. King passed away last night, his home in Las Vegas. And, but I understand Lucille and his music lives on. All right, so, R.I.P. to one of the greatest musicians of all time, B.B. King. Actually, he performed here in Missoula several years ago. And in case you didn't get a chance to see that, wow, you know, just unbelievably talented, a sweet, wonderful, you know, guy. Anyway, so, R.I.P. to B.B. King. Seven two one twelve ninety is our number, one eight hundred five six eight five three zero nine. And John is talking with someone on the phone right now. We're going to get that person on?
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get you on.
Okay.
Okay, who, who do we got? A lot of people are talking, maybe not, oh, it was Jeannie and she wanted to thank Adam Hertz for his service.
Oh, there you go. Okay, real quickly, we have like six minutes, so let me just do this. Deputy Paige Pavelon, Missoula City, County Sheriff's Office was fired and now she has sued the Sheriff's Department, County Attorney, and the Human Resources Department.
And if you listen to our newscasts, you know her fairly well because she was frequently referred to because her job was the Public Information Officer.
Exactly. The reason she was fired, we, we got a news release from Brenda Basset, who was the new Public Information Officer, that talked about the reason why she was let go. And I'll just go ahead and quote here, and I quote, deputy, this was provided by the Sheriff's Department, deputy Pavelon was terminated April thirteenth for conduct disclosed and statements made during an internal investigation into the February 2015 arrest of a coworker. The sheriff and county attorney's offices have determined her ability to serve as a witness in the criminal justice system had been compromised by her actions and the county attorney placed deputy Pavelon's name on a, what is called a Brady List. It means there's evidence affecting the credibility of law enforcement officers as a witness because they knowingly lied in an official capacity. Based on violations of her oath of office, the law enforcement code of ethics, and the likelihood she would be impeached as a witness about disclosure by the prosecutor that her name appears on a Brady List, the sheriff determined that Pavelon can no longer effectively serve in the capacity of deputy sheriff. So, that was the news release of her firing, all right? Now, not long after that, we had a chance to visit with Josh Van de Wettering.
I think we should also mention, the county attorney's office also chimed in on that with the Brady issue.
Right.
So, it wasn't just the one department.
Yeah. So, anyway, I had a chance to visit with Josh Van de Wettering, who is, who is Pavelon's attorney, and they filed the, the lawsuit, not in Missoula, but in Lewis and Clark County.
And your city got upset about that. They sent out a press release yesterday.
Exactly.
Saying, well, we don't understand why they didn't file in Missoula.
This was Steve Carey, who is representing, the Carey Law Firm's representing the, the county, actually, who said at a press release that, quote, "She has filed her suit in the wrong county." The county attorney, the sheriff, and the Human Resources Director all live in Missoula, as does Ms. Pavelon, I'm quoting now, quoting here, "We have no idea why she filed her complaint in Helena," end quote. Well, got on the phone with Josh Van de Wettering and here's, he explained why she decided to, why, I'm sorry, why he decided to file a suit at Lewis and Clark County.
I filed in Lewis and Clark County because the law allows you to do that, to file, when you finally get to a state or one of its political subdivisions, you can file in that county or in Lewis and Clark County. I chose to file in Lewis and Clark County.
Now, he, Van de Wettering is very careful to emphasize the fact, has great respect for the judges and courts in Missoula County with this caveat.
The Missoula courts, obviously, work very closely with the Missoula County Attorney and the Missoula Sheriff. And because of that closeness, you know, the judges will probably have to recuse themselves anyway. And so I decided just to go ahead and file directly in Lewis and Clark County instead of having those issues in Missoula.
Now, if you want to read the complaint, the complaint in its entirety is on our website on the news story.
It's like forty-one pages.